Board President, I'd like to begin with a pledge to the flag. Stand up, I'm not sure if you can see. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all, we have, I want to begin the meeting with a couple of presentations. Mr. Whittmore, Mr. Gannon, you want to begin with your presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mannix, we are very fortunate. Tonight, we have our Director of Buildings and Grounds here with us tonight, and Lee Rounds is there. He's certainly by far the most talented person in his position that I've seen in my career. Our grounds look amazing, and we were notified that Lee won an award, and we wanted to recognize him publicly. For those of you that know Lee, you know exactly what I'm talking about, he has a vision for our campus. He is able to look at the aesthetics and decide how he wants it to look in five years, 10 years, 15 years. He has a vision, and it's really come to life. We have the most beautiful campus, and it's so well-kept by Lee Rounds. So tonight, I would like to recognize our Buildings and Grounds Supervisor, Lee Rounds. Our grounds show that Lee is dedicated to making the Queensberry campus one we can be proud of. Lee is always finding ways to improve the appearance of our school grounds, and is easily responsive and proactive. We ask and Lee responds. Today, Lee was recognized by Warren County Water and Soil Conservation. Lee was given the Ronald Montessi Conservation Recognition Award. This is an award that identifies individuals who have taken the initiative to improve their environment and develop partnerships within their community. We are truly honored to have Lee on our team, and I have a certificate here, Lee, that I will make sure it's from Mr. Mannix and myself that you get. It's well-deserved, it says, "This is a certificate of appreciation to Lee Rounds on December 14th, 2020, in recognition of your extraordinary service and dedication to your profession." So, and it's from Mr. Mannix and myself, but on behalf of the Queensberry Union Free School District, Lee, we couldn't be more proud to have you as a part of our team, and if everyone could join me in a round of applause for Lee, I would really appreciate it.
Congratulations, Lee.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody. I did a program with, I tried to get it implemented with the D E C, that fell through. Warren County Soil and Water really stepped right up, and we do, we're slowly growing an arboretum on campus. So, it's good, it's hands-on for the kids, they get to see exactly what it goes, how it takes to plant a tree, how to make it grow, and it's, you know, gets them away from a screen, it's really, it puts them right down to Mother Nature. With that, I helped the county out quite a bit when we do the W H B I walkout every year in the woods, and it's helped them set up stations, and I had expressed this, Mr. Whittmore, tonight, that we've got a couple other things planned, and hopefully in the future, that it's going to save the district a lot of money. So, it's good working with our local entities, we all benefit from it, and it's extremely beneficial. So, I'm really glad to be proud of the Queensberry community, and let's keep on rolling, we got it. So, thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Lee, congratulations, behalf of the board. You do an amazing job, and it'd be one thing if you had unlimited resources, but we all know you don't. And you, the athletic fields from A to Z, everything is used a lot, at least it always has been. This is an unusual year with COVID, but we use our fields and our grounds a lot, and they look fantastic. And everyone says that when they come on campus, not only the grounds, but the buildings and everything. So, thank you so much for everything you do.
You're welcome, thank you.
Mr. Gannon, I think we're going to go to our next presentation, which is to Mr. DiCaprio and Mr. Brannigan, and a middle school construction project they've been doing, building some furniture.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mannix. A few years ago, when we had a dream for our construction trades on campus, and really elevating it and raising the bar, one part of that was finding the right fit for a retirement in the middle school. And we had a third-grade teacher who's very talented with his hands, knows a lot about the trade, and is truly excited about teaching the trade to his students. Stepped up to the plate, decided he was interested in going to the middle school, we honored that. We were excited about having Mr. DiCaprio over there, and one of his visions was to work on a project around Adirondack chairs. So he and Mr. Brannigan talked long and hard and came up with ideas, and they're here tonight to talk to you and the Board of Education about this project, and it's truly, he's done a fantastic job. And I can't wait to see Mr. DiCaprio and Mr. Brannigan showcase this project for the board.
Thank you, Mr. Gannon and Board of Education, for allowing us to speak here tonight. I'm joined with Mr. DiCaprio, and we also have an eighth-grade student, Lily Sankey, with us tonight, joining from home. Thank you, you'll hear from Lily in a little while. Like Mr. Gannon said, we're just so fortunate and privileged to have the talent, the skills that Mr. DiCaprio brings to our STEM program here, and truly brought to life some phenomenal opportunities for our kids to take math and science and STEM work, and just produce such amazing quality work. So, we're going to take you through a little bit of what this project entailed for our students, both hybrid and while they're in person, and then we'll hear some testimonial from Lily as well. So, I'm going to move behind the screen here and move our program along, and now you'll hear from Mr. DiCaprio.
Well, good evening, Board members and administrators and parents sitting at home tuning in and community members tuning into this week's board meeting. I want to thank, first of all, Mike and Kyle for making this possible for the students here at the middle school. Right now, Mike is sharing just a quick glimpse of some of the pictures throughout the project, a lot of finished products, and how they are being utilized at home, and how the kids are staging them at home. So, from A to Z, we took it from raw lumber, very long dimensions, 12 foot, 16 foot. I cut it to manageable sizes for the kids to make each and every part of each of the chairs. The one displayed in front of me is an example of a student's work, I just changed the front plate on it. You can see some of them, take them home and stain them, and set them as displays within their bedrooms. So, they get to pick them up here from school, along with the help of a parent. Obviously, they kind of put it in their backpack and get it home. We had over 75 of them picked up here at the back door of the workshop over the last two months. So, quite an extraordinary feat for parents. Now Mike's gone through, these are the actual steps of cutting the pieces that I stole off of a website and just turned into a slideshow for the kids. This is just a quick glimpse of a clip that they would pre-watch, so the class was almost flipped. They'd watch this the night before, or two days before, come in and at least have an idea of what tools they'd be using, and how they were going to use those tools, along with my assistants. And the rest of these step slides are just the steps to building the frame to start with. Another small clip, we use the floor as our workshop a lot, show them how they can use their bodies, along with their tools to help them hold what they need to hold. And as the frame unfolded, you got to figure out how to put it all together. So as Mike clips through the next slide, we then, you know, have to make the seat pieces, and they kind of self-explanatory. Now, we had virtual students that would come and pick all these pieces up, and have a set ready for them. The thing they missed out on was making all the pieces themselves, but they'd come, they'd pick up all the pieces, and they'd follow these steps on how to assemble their Adirondack chair in their garage, in their basement, hopefully not on the kitchen floor, and eventually they get to the last step, which is adding the arm pieces. And luckily, here at Queensberry, we have a nice laser that they could unscrew the faceplate. Once it was totally assembled and sanded, they could customize it with their name, or their name and a favorite sports team, or whatever they really wanted that was deemed appropriate, and they all chose something personal to themselves. As Mike clicks through this, this was my class evaluation at the end, that simply asked them, what was their favorite tool, what did they not feel so comfortable, or was the least favorite? And then the most important question, I thought, was, I had them tell me one thing they learned through the process, at least one thing, several kids wrote many things as to what they learned. The girl I invited, Lillian Sankey, to be a part of this, was actually also a former third-grade student, so I knew her quite well, but honestly, I could have asked any of the 85 kids that took part of this in person, and even some virtual ones, to be a part of this meeting tonight, because they were, they all learned something. Some of them made it as simple as, I never realized what it would take to go from start to finish. I learned that I actually could do it, like they had lost sight of, or never had sight of, starting something so daunting at first, and then seeing it to completion. I'm proud to announce that every single student that started the chair and stayed the route of hybrid learning, completed their chair. We still have a handful of them left to be picked up. This is actually a student chair that I just unscrewed, and if they come, I'll re-screw their plate on it, and I'll take the Queensberry Spartan plate off. Without further ado, I don't want to keep Lily from her family time. I'd like to have Lily join in this meeting right now, and ask her a couple things about her perspective of how the project unfolded in the eyes of an eighth. Lily, are you there? Can you hear us?
Yeah.
So Lily, remind me, because I don't have every student's evaluation memorized. What did you find as a favorite tool along this project?
Um, I think I liked them all the same, I didn't really have a favorite, I didn't have a least favorite. I really enjoyed using them all, it was definitely an experience, like learning how to use them, and learning that I actually can use them, and I don't have to be afraid of it anymore.
Right. I didn't really do the best job as a teacher asking kids prior to, at the beginning I did, especially with the chop saw. But, did you have any experience with any of the tools that are sitting behind me? They're part of our backdrop, every single tool that we use, you can't really see them because they're behind the chairs. Did you have any experience with any of the hand or power tools we used throughout the project?
No, I didn't.
And that was part of my plan, was I kind of realized that, you know, an eighth-grade student has limited experience with power tools and hand tools that it took to use, to construct these chairs, and giving them the exposure was, it was the perfect time. Like, not much good has come from our hybrid pandemic mode, except for, for me, this project, it worked out perfectly, because I could help the kids, because I had half of them each day when they needed assistance. I could be right there, a lot more hands-on. And, and like any other classroom across our district, some kids need more help than others, and it just really, it worked out perfect. So Lily, I got one last big question for you. What was the greatest thing you learned through this project?
I think the greatest thing I learned is that I'm actually capable of using the big scary tools that I thought were scary before, and now that I've actually used them, I can help my dad work on bigger projects and continue on to help him in stuff that I would really enjoy. And I learned that there's many more tools that I didn't even know about, that are actually really cool to use.
Yeah, we just scratched the surface, these are the ones we use just for this project. And now, when you're out and about with your family and walking through loads, you'll be like, wait a minute, I've used that tool. And, wait a minute, what's that one do? And so it opens up new pathways, and I'm hopeful that not just Lillian, and she may not even choose our C T path in the high school, but, you know, many of these kids may. And the excitement as we went through the project, I knew it was the highlight of their day, when they got to come in and add to their chair, whether we were cutting the pieces or assembling the pieces, and then getting to pick them up, that was the best treat of all, is the reaction of the parents as they came to pick up the chairs with their student.
Mr. DiCaprio, I have one question for Lily, but also just want to point out one thing, that Lily was talking about, these big scary tools, and I think that's one of the things that Mr. DiCaprio and Mr. Wagoner, our technology teacher, do so well, is introducing, properly introducing students to the safety protocols and procedures that go into operating these tools. It's very, very thorough, very deliberate, to ensure that our students feel comfortable, feel confident, before they actually start using these tools. So, Lily, that said, if you have to pick a next project that you'd want to work on, whether it would be here, or like you're saying, at home, what would you want to build?
Um, I think I would want to build a shed of some kind, like that could store, like tractors and stuff.
There you go, there you go, Mr. Gannon, right into your lead-in. You might get that chance, Lily, and right in the high school, as a ninth, 10th, or 11th grader. I do believe we're going to be building some more sheds over at the high school, and maybe Mr. D, even though I'm here in the middle school, I might be a part of that down the line, when we can have some after-school activities reembedded into our school days. So, Lillian, thank you very much. The project only worked because the students made it work, and I want to thank Mr. Gannon, mostly for getting me out of my comfort zone, and trusting me, and Mr. Brannigan as well, for trusting me with the students and along with this project, because it was the unknown. And sometimes you don't know the unknown, and it worked out better than possibly could have been planned. So I want to thank both of them here publicly for trusting me along the way.
Well, thank you, Mr. D, for bringing it to life, and Lily, thank you so much for joining us tonight. I'll turn it over if we have any questions now for Mr. D or Lily.
You can buy the leftover chair, no, they're not.
I mean, the board members have any questions, I'm not sure if we can, they can raise their hand, or if that's a better way to do it, Mr. Lutheringer?
Well, thank you again very much for your time.
Thank you, Lily, thank you so much for your time and your efforts in class.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all for that. Next on our agenda, we need to open a public hearing, I believe, Mr. Whittmore, for the Smart School Bond Act Preliminary Investment Plan.
So, at this time, we'll have the public hearing for the Smart School Bond Act Preliminary Investment Plan. If there's any comments from the public, could they address the board now with those comments? John, anything? No? Not seeing anything from the public, we will close the, close the public session at this point for the public hearing on the Smart Schools Bond Act.
Okay, and that comes up later in the meeting for a resolution.
Item A is the Board of Education.
And also, Mr. Gannon, Mr. Lutheringer, or Mr. Whittmore, are we able to do the open forum?
We are able to do an open forum.
Okay. We, there are two specific open forums that are regular Board of Education meeting to provide opportunities to address the Board of Education. We ask participants who wish to speak during the first open forum to identify themselves verbally, and if applicable, the organization they're representing, so that they may be recognized by the Board President. For clarity, we ask that all speakers identify the school-related matter or topic to be discussed. In order to conduct district business in a smooth, orderly, and tightly mannered, open forum is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes, with three minutes allocated to each speaker. We do appreciate the public attendance and participation at all meetings, so in our, in present meetings, we typically have a sign-up sheet, and short of that, is there any members of the public that would wish to address the Board of Education at this time? I see a group chat comment from Jen Bremsers, that she would like to address the board.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Hi, Jen.
Okay, I wanted to just let you know about something that I've been working on in the background, that I'm hoping that we can get Queensberry involved in. I've been speaking with Glenn Koch from the 405 Building, and I've been working with one of my colleagues from SUNY Plattsburgh to get a NASA ISS downlink in place, and basically what that is, is a 20-minute Zoom FaceTime call with the astronauts that are up there on their six-month mission right now. And we're doing this as part of an organization that, that we've been, that I've done community service with before in Queensberry School, and so far, I have the support from the 405 Building, which is awesome. But I just wanted to ask the board if, in the small chance that we are able to pull this off, that you might provide support and encourage teachers to participate with their students. One thing that's nice about it is that it's going to be completely virtual, and we plan to try to prepare a day for the events. However, when we make the application, the stronger, we have a better chance of actually getting it, the more dates we can give them, and so we have to be somewhat flexible, and we won't know what the exact date or time it is until we hear back from them. But we're trying to get as many North Country Schools as involved as we can, and we're also looking for teachers, or administrators, or community members that might have an area of expertise that could, that would be willing to do a short session or workshop that could relate to character traits. So we're trying to not only expose students to STEM-related fields, but we're also trying to expose them that it's not only intelligence that gets you there, or physics, but, you know, things like perseverance and optimism. You have to be pretty optimistic to go up into space for six months, I think, and things like that. So any support that the Board of Ed or other districts might be able to provide, I would be very grateful for, thank you.
Thank you very much, that sounds like a very interesting project, so I'm sure we'll, we'll talk more about it, and someone will be in touch with you, Mr. Gannon, or Mr. Whittmore, to talk maybe a little bit more about it, and maybe flesh out some details and exactly what we can do to help you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other members of the public that wish to comment to the board?
Hello?
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 Mr. Kosha?
Yes, I just wanted to congratulate Mr. Gannon on the video that he linked, showing how tests are given, and, and offering the public knowledge. I was just wondering if, what kind of response have we gotten? Are we getting parents saying, no, they don't want their children to have this? Or most parents who are out there saying, yes, my kid can be one of those 20%?
Mr. Gannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mannix. Mr. Kosha, we have, so 20% of our student population off of the in-person students is around 485 students. If we were to enter a yellow zone, that would need to be tested. We have just about 1,100 consents, yes consents, at this point in time. So we're way over what we need, but that's in a good way. So yeah, that went really well, we did have some no's, but it was minimal. And so, but we're really, really happy that over 1,100 people have consented, if, in the event that that were, you know, that that fell into place, so that's the statistics behind it.
Thank you.
Any other members, thank you, Mr. Kosha.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public wish to address the board? Scott, do you have access to see the public? I don't.
I do not see any other questions from the public.
None, any hand raises?
No, there's no hand raises, and there's nothing in the chat.
I can see the chat, yeah, okay, well, thank you very much, so with that, we do appreciate the comments from the public, and we look forward to them, so it's actually nice to get back to some normalcy with that. So we're in the open forum, and without further ado, Mr. Whittmore, we'll start with the business items.
Recommend that the Board approve Business Item A, where as the Board of Education held a public hearing on December 14th, 2020, in order to receive public comment on the district's proposed change with Smart School Bond Act Preliminary Investment Plan, whereas Board of Education desires to adopt the revised Smart School Bond Act Preliminary Investment Plan. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that the Board of Education hereby adopts the revised Smart School Bond Act Preliminary Investment Plan as published on the district's website.
Mr. Whittmore, this is a straight majority vote?
Yes, it is, Scott.
Okay. I've heard the, the resolution, can I get a motion to, for the resolution as proposed?
So moved.
This is Fran. This is Fran, I second it.
Thank you, Fran. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion one passes, motion A, excuse me.
Recommend that the Board approve Business Item B, motion to approve the enclosed tax collector's report as presented.
Thank you, may I have a motion, please, for motion B?
So moved, this is Kathy, even though it's bizarre.
Thank you, Kathy, can I have a second, please?
Second, this is Amy.
Hi, Amy, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Please, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion B passes.
Recommend that the Board approve Business Item C, motion related to adoption of the New York State Government Records Laws and Rules as presented.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
So moved, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy, second? Stacy?
Yeah.
Great. Any discussion on the motion? Okay. Please, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Recommend that the board approve business item D, motion to, to award the bid for the middle school crawl space pipe replacement project to Hamilton Plumbing Incorporated in the amount of $9,939.
All right, can I have a, uh, motion, please?
So moved.
Tim, thank you, Tim. Have a second?
Second, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. All right. All in favor of the motion, please, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Pass.
Recommend that the board approve business consent items E through B.
E through?
B.
B, okay, yep. Before we take a look, any, uh, any of them need to be removed? Okay, hearing none. Now can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Stacy. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. It's a consent agenda. So, uh, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great, the, uh, business consent items. Consent agenda passes. Uh, Mr. Gannon?
I recommend the board move to approve educational item A, the motion to approve the following long-term substitute appointment of Michelle Lombardi, QES grade three teacher.
Thank you. Um, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Kathy. Uh, Stacy, second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion A carries.
Action item B, I recommend the board move to approve the following revised long-term substitute appointment of Ellen Manor, WHBI art teacher.
Thank you, Mr. Gannon. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Uh, Stacy?
Yep.
Second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion B carries.
I recommend the board move to approve educational consent items C through H.
Thank you. Or do anyone, does any of the board members need anything pulled from the consent agenda C through H? Okay, hearing none. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Kathy. Second?
So moved. This is Amy.
Hi, Amy. Thank you, Amy. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Consent agenda passes. Thank you, uh, everyone. The, um, up to the point of the meeting for any committee reports, I not aware of the, if there were any, um, meetings of the committees, it was some, I know policy discussion, but I'm not sure if there was actually a, a meeting or not, uh, anything to report?
I think the only thing, Mr. Mannix, is that safety is meeting this way, right? Or this week, right, Mr. Whittmore?
Safety, uh, meets on Wednesday afternoon. Yep.
Great. Okay. So look forward to that report.
Question, Dan. This is Fran.
Go ahead, Fran.
Uh, Scott, is that, uh, meeting going to be virtual also?
It is. It starts at 3:30 and it is, uh, virtual.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions regarding the committee reports? Okay, um, any board member comments?
I just have one. I'm just wondering, Kyle, is there a graph, um, of maybe the COVID positives that we have by each building somewhere? I know when you keep sending the emails that tell us that there's been a, you know, there's been a case and personally, honestly, for me, I'm just like, oh, it's another one. It's another one. But like, um, I like to see kind of them in graphs. Maybe it's just easier to remember how many we have and how many, you know, along the line, but maybe I missed it somewhere, but is there a graph or do we have one?
No, I, I've got, well, I have the current numbers, um, at this point in time in, I can, there's two, there's several data sets, Stacy, that I could share with you, but one that I have at my fingertips right now. We currently have, um, 40 students in mandatory quarantine right now. We're awaiting 25 pen, pending test results. We have nine staff members either, um, you know, that are in isolation quarantine and pending uh, results as well. So we have about 74 total people currently right now that we're awaiting information on that we're aware of as a school district. But I can go back and get, um, we, we actually have a dashboard to, uh, New York State on our website, uh, that keeps up to date with whether it was, you know, um, it actually does show there whether it was a student or whether it was, uh, an adult um, on, on the dashboard, but I can get all that information and I will share it with the board of education.
Yeah, I'm not trying to make more work for you or Rich. I was just, it's sometimes it's easier to read graphs. Sometimes if you keep, when we keep getting emails and another one happened, another one happened. And sometimes you can lose sight of like how many and which building, that kind of thing. So thank you.
Any other comments? Questions? Okay. We're, uh, at our second open forum. Are there any members of the public that wish to address the board at this time? Swittemore or Mr. Lutheringer?
I don't see any, I don't see any hands up, Dan.
Okay, okay. Then, um, we do have, um, some informational items there. Actually, I don't know. I, I, I don't see it on here, but I think, did we have, uh, a number of virtual grandparents breakfasts this past week?
We, we did. Uh, Mr. Mannix, thanks for bringing that up. It was, uh, I'm going to ask if you don't mind Mrs. Koch to say a few words as the WHBI has, um, finished, but it was, I, I worked my way around the building. And it, it was, I, I think many of you saw, um, a student would stand up in front of the screen and their grandparents would be on the screen and they were taking pictures just as if they were there. And, uh, it was fun. John Lutheringer ran the help desk with our educational technologists for the district. Those phone calls were fun, um, trying to get our grandparents logged on and getting them into the classrooms. And we, we had, we, we really enjoyed it though. Uh, I was in Mrs. Hickley's classroom when many of the grandparents logged in and to see their, you know, they're waving, they're just so excited. And one thing that we realized as a result of this, and I, I guess it had, we had always known this, but we actually, um, our international grandparents were really thankful. Um, we have several sets of international grandparents that were able to come in virtually, um, that potentially had never been here. So that, that was, uh, you know, when you think about what could it be for the future when we do get back to in-person? And you think about, could we still stream it and allow them to attend as well? Just kind of, um, you know, we're learning a lot as we go on how to accommodate all. And so, but Gwen, do you mind saying a few words? I know Jessica's, Jessica's coming up fast and furious. I believe tomorrow's grade three.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mr. Gannon. Um, it would, it couldn't have gone any smoother. It was so wonderful. Actually, a lot of teachers wanted to do this way again. However, it was a lot more personable um, for the teachers to split the grass in their classroom. So we opened up with about a 22-minute introductory video. Get slide shows of kids with their grandparents. So that was really nice to see. And that's something that we want to continue on with the tradition of like a kind of a rolling presentation as they enter into the gymnasium. And we, we stuck with our normal musical performances from our band and our orchestra. And Elizabeth Tatlek, our music teacher, did a phenomenal job. She did 24 recordings of each individual class singing in the gym, distance apart. And with the remote students as well, she did a really great job with, um, recording their videos remotely. Um, so that was really special because usually when the fourth and fifth graders are all smushed up in there singing, you can't even find your own grandchild. This way through the video recording, we were able to single out each individual child so they could really get a face-to-face with grandchild. Grandparents then navigated to a Google Meet, which was really fun and listening to them when they would call the hotline. But we really had less than 20 calls each day. We did a great job communicating, thanks to Aubrey and Chris and Communications, the steps. And, um, we had an outpour of parents. I know Wendy Single had over 40 grandparents in her classroom of a class of 20 students. Um, very few teach, uh, students didn't have a grandchild. So we, uh, grandparents, excuse me. So we also allowed them to invite a special someone and it was really great for them to go up one by one and read their stories. Um, some teachers actually hand, had their students handwrite letters to their grandparents and then made their grandparents present back during grandparents breakfast. So it really opened up, um, a whole new world and they got to see inside their classrooms. We don't want to do that again next year, but it really was a true success. I'm really thankful to all the rooms, the music department, to John, to Aubrey, to the board of education for continuing to support it. And Mr. Gannon and Mrs. Trolstra, it really was a great event. And I know Jessica's going to have great success the rest of this week too. We still even did our famous giveaway cakes too, for the furthest distance traveled. So that was really exciting too.
Was it?
Um, so we actually had someone from Texas and someone from Canada. And then we had two Florida families. Actually, the Rossetti's were one of the and they were within like 20 minutes of another family. And then we had a family out in California that was, um, tuning in as well. So it was really fun Dixie. So those California families, they had to get up really early and really commended the grandparents for showing the dedication to their grandchild by learning to navigate through technology, just that love and support they have to overcome those obstacles to be a part of that special day.
Uh, thank you very much, Ms. Koch. That's, uh, outstanding that, uh, with, uh, obviously we say this every, I think every meeting and just about every day with so much going on that we still think about these events and these occasions to, uh, celebrate the kids and to, to make it something, you know, with the virtual where they can't have, uh, people in person. And I think, Mr. Gannon, you're right. Going forward, I think this presents a lot of possibilities for so much more participation than, than, uh, previous, uh, years. But, uh, no, that's, that's awesome. I think it's great. Thank you so much. So, um, I know we have exit. Anything else? Any other comments or on the board? Okay, we do have a need for executive session this evening. So we'll be, um, uh, closing of this, the, uh, attachment for the executive session was in the uh, Friday report. So we can, uh, go out and come back in. Uh, with nothing else to come before the board, I'll, uh, ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session. For, uh, discussion with council regarding two specific employees. That's what the executive session is.
So moved. This is Amy.
Thank you, Amy. Any second?
Second.
Is that Tim?
Yes, Tim.
Okay, thanks. Are you all in favor of going into executive session?
Aye.
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 Okay. All right. I'll see you in a fall, in a few minutes. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, the public for attending.